Wait, guys, do we have class today or is it another instance where it's like the test counts as like our class quote unquote?
Wait, guys, do we have class today or is it another instance where it's like the test counts as like our class quote unquote?
He said that he would fill up today to just go over everything, but I don't know if he remembers.
So like really need that review or is it required?
It's not required. He said it was optional, but he did say that he was going to be here just in case we had questions. And he was going to do a review, but I don't know where he's at.
Yeah. Um, in that case, thank you very much for helping me out. I'm going to go enjoy my lunch. Um, best of luck.
Enjoy your lunch.
Enjoy.
Wait, so just to be clear, today's class isn't mandatory then?
Today's class shouldn't be mandatory. I believe it's not, but I wouldn't doubt it because I don't have that at work.
Okay, I'm like, uh, I'm at work, but okay.
If he shows up, I could always send a message through the group me. If you guys need, if you guys want to come back and I'll give you like five or 10 minutes, but if he doesn't, I'll just say he never showed up.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
All right, here we go. How many people got here? Seventeen? Okay, this is what I've done so far when I reviewed. This is a study session for today. Uh, what I did with the other two sections, I just went through the entire test and gave you practice questions. How does that sound?
That would be perfect.
All right, here we go. Let me get something set here. It'd be about sixty minutes. So there, there's basically twenty-seven questions, four hundred and fifty-five points. And the test divides into phonetics, phonology, morphology. That's kind of how it works, right? Okay, so let me share my screen here. This is going to get complicated because I have to look at the test. I have to talk to you guys. I make sure I don't share the wrong screen, right? Okay, here we go. Let's see. Okay, so let's take a look at the first, the first three questions right now. And I'll, I'll give you some sample, kind of what it'll be like. Okay, so the, the first three questions that they're dealing with definitions of, uh, I don't know why I put that twice. The definitions of the, the three fields we've studied so far. Okay, so the example here would be. This kind of throws me off. Make sure I'm not. Okay, now let me, let me look at it. Okay, so I'm going to give you some definitions and there's three possibilities. Morphology, phonology, phonetics. Okay, how about this? This field examines how words are constructed out of smaller units which have meaning or grammatical function.
Morphology?
Good. This linguistic field studies the sound system of a language and how the particular sounds contrast in each language to form an integrated system for encoding information, how such systems differ from one language to another.
Phonetics?
Nope.
Phonology.
Yep, and then let's look at phonetics. This field looks at how the sounds are produced, where they are produced, and whether the sounds are voiced or voiceless.
Phonetics?
Right, so the phonetics one, it'll be focused on articulatory phonetics. It'll be looking at how the sounds are produced in the vocal tract. And that's the first thirty points of the test right there. That's it. So make sure that you know. You know the, uh, the three fields. This is important.
Professor, these definitions are coming from the workbook, correct?
Yes, yeah, they are.
And you said there was going to be twenty-seven questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's exactly right. Okay, so let me look at another, at the test one more time. So let's go to number four. Okay, I got it. Okay, let me go back. Let me share my screen here. How do I do this? I think I'm going to need to draw on this one. I need to use the. Okay, so let's say that we have the, the aspirated and we have the unaspirated P, right? So we have, we have, um. Let's say pot. And then we have spot. So we can say that the P, it can be aspirated when it's in the beginning of the word and when it's in a consonant cluster after a consonant, it's not aspirated as much. Right here. So the aspirated and unaspirated P. Okay, think about that for just a minute. Now, let me go to the question. You can see what I'm going to ask. Okay, so it says, and I'm, I'm changing some of the words around, but here, here's how I'm wording it. In the initial position, the P is aspirated a lot, as in the word I just showed you, pot. However, when the P occurs as the second sound in a consonant cluster, as in the word spot, it's not aspirated as much. Therefore, the aspirated and unaspirated P are A, separate phonemes, B, owl phones of the same phoneme.
They're separate phonemes, right?
Nope. We're, we're going to say on this one, let me go back to it, see if I can look at it one more time here. Yeah, if, if you look at the, the, the P, the aspirated and unaspirated P, well, I, it's like I erased everything, but, but it, it's not really meaningful distinctive, right? So the, the phoneme P can be represented two different ways, as in pot and spot. So even though those things are slightly different in their pronunciation, they're not really meaningful distinctive. The only way you could, you could say you have a minimal, if, if you had a minimal pair between the two, you could say they're not separate phonemes, but pot and spot are not minimal pairs. So we're going to say that these are actually owl phones of the same phoneme. So the aspirated and unaspirated P in English represent owl phones of the same phoneme. So make sure.
It's unaspirated when it comes after a consonant, correct?
That's right. That's right. And that's quick. That's a fifteen pointer, by the way. So so far, we have ten points. Ten points, ten points. This one's still multiple choice, but it was a little bit more complex, so I made it worth more, so fifteen points. Okay, let's try another one here. Let me see what else we have. Give me a quick second here. Okay, this one's pretty easy.
Okay, here.
Let me share my screen now. This is number five. This is your first free response question, first of many. This is a twenty-five point question. Write a short response addressing the following tasks. Give examples of inflectional and derivational morphemes, at least two. And then show how they attach to words, then explain what inflectional derivational information they add to the words to which they attach. So let's do inflection. Let's give two examples of inflectional morphemes first. Can somebody give me an example of an inflectional morpheme?
Uh, pluralization and.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do this one. So we'll say. We'll say the plural. S, and then it says, give an example. It says, it, show how they attach to words. So we'll say cars. Right there. And then give me one more.
Uh, the present participle. So he walks, she walks.
Okay, good. So we'll say they, it's a little bit more than that, though. It's, we're going to say third. Person. Present. If you don't like all of this big, huge name here, don't pick this one. Third person present singular. The S, as in walks. You know, she, she walks to school every morning or something. So let's see what we have here. So give examples, show how they attach to words. Believe it or not, we've done everything we're supposed to do here. So the plural S, that explains what information it adds to the word. The third person present singular explains what information it's adding. And then these are the examples. Okay, let's do two more with derivational morphemes. Can somebody give me an example of two derivational morphemes? And if you want, you can give one example that maybe affects meaning, another one which affects the part of speech, and you can illustrate it both ways. Anybody think of anything?
Maybe hoping versus hopeful?
Okay, good. So let's say. Derivational, right? We will say the. F U L, and then you have to give an example word. You'll say hopeful. So if you say hopeful, right, hope and then full, how is this word changing if you add F U L on it? You have to look at what part of speech is hope and then what part of speech is hopeful. So what are you going to say about that?
It changes a descriptive into an emotional.
And we got to look at, we have four things we got to look at here. Nouns, adjectives, adverbs, and verbs. So let's look at hope first of all. What part of speech is hope? Is it a noun, an adjective?
Changes from a noun to an adjective.
Yes. We have to say that. So that would be one thing. Now, can somebody give me an example of a derivation of morphine that maybe affects the meaning of the word? You have to think of it as a prefix. What's a prefix we use in English that when it attaches to a word, it definitely changes the meaning? What is that?
Re?
Oh, good. You said it. So re, give me an example word.
Rewrite?
Good. So we'll say changes. Meaning to what?
To do again?
Good. So now we have it. Now, this is, this is not multiple choice. I repeat, this is free response. You can write it any way you want. If you want to make it more of kind of an essay, you'll say two examples of inflectional morphemes are the plural S and the third person present singular S. An example of the plural S is cars. An example of the third person present singular S is walks. Say in addition. Uh, two derivational morphemes are the F U L and the R E affixes. Then you say in the word hopeful, the F U L is changing the word from a noun to an adjective. In the word rewrite, is changing the meaning of the word right to again, something like that. You have to say something like that. I give you twenty-five points right there. So this is a pretty big one. It's a free response. You will just see blank space. That's it. You'll see this question and then a box below it. Just complete it. Just go down the steps. See everything I'm asking you to do. Do it as best you can. You'll probably get almost, probably most of the points on this one.
Professor, could you repeat the three types of S endings? I know one of them is plural and then the other one is the third person present.
Yes, and the thir- third one is the possessive S. John's bike was stolen yesterday.
Okay, and then the, the two E D ending, so what those be?
The simple past and the past participle endings. For example, I walked to school yesterday. The E D is the simple past. Or I have walked to school every day this month. That's the past participle.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. So that gives you number five. So let's see what else we have going on here. So you see that ten, 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 fifteen, now twenty-five, it accumulates, believe it or not, to four hundred and fifty-five points. That's what it'll end up being at the end. Okay, let me look at one more, see what we have. I'm going to go to number. Okay, good. Number six. Some of these require, uh, i- it's applying what you know to, to some example. Okay, let me see if I can give you an example here. Let's say. Let me share my screen here first. Forget what I'm doing. Sometimes when I'm doing the Zoom thing, you know, it, it's never happened to you guys. I've never had to get out of a Zoom and Ctrl+Alt+Delete and come back. But when I'm teaching my Chinese students, they're in China and I'm using Zoom a lot. Two or three times during the class, I gotta, I gotta exit, Ctrl+Alt+Delete, and then come back into Zoom. So I, I wonder if, if my problems are because they're so far away or what? I have no idea why it does that because I don't even have this trouble with you guys. But if I have problems and I, I can't control the Zoom, I will delete and get out and come back again into the meeting. That's what I have to do with those guys. But so far, I have really had to do that with you guys. I don't know why it gives me problems in one situation, not in another. Okay, let's look at this one. Okay, let me, let me.
Your internet or maybe it's the Zoom app?
I, I don't know. My internet's actually pretty good, but I know that my Chinese students, their internet is horrible, absolutely terrible. They, they make it slow on purpose over there. I don't know why. They have to come in and out of the meeting all the time. They're always getting bounced out. Okay, let's take a look at this. So let's, we, we talked about this before, right? So we have. We have the word walked, right? You can see how the E D here is pronounced as a T. We have the word. Grabbed and the E D here is pronounced as a D. And then we have, let's say. Planted. And we have the E D which is pronounced as an it. So we have walked, we have grabbed, and we have planted. So you see those, those endings there, right? Now, if I go back. To the actual question. So it says, the inflectional ending is pronounced differently depending on whether the ending occurs after voiced and voiced consonants. In addition, the ending is pronounced differently when it occurs after a T or D consonant sound. The fact that the E D ending has three different pronunciations illustrates examples of a what? A, owl phone, B, owl morph, C, phone, or D, phoneme? That is it. Now, the key is you saw the E D, right? The E D is definitely an inflectional past tense ending. That's an owl morph. So because it has different pronunciations, but it still has the same grammatical function, that is an owl morph. That's exactly what that is. Okay, let's do seven and eight now. Let's see what we got here. And believe it or not, that whole mess was just a ten-point question, but it's a multiple choice. Okay, let's go to the next one.
The reason why it's an owl morph, it's because it's different pronunciation, but it's spelled the same?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's different pronunciations, but with the same spelling. It's different pronunciations, but with the same grammatical function. It's still the E D, the simple past inflectional ending. So you have to look at what the, what the definition of an owl morph is. An owl morph is a non-distinctive variation of a morphine. So even, even though the E, E D has three different pronunciations, it's still the simple past inflectional affix. It hasn't changed in its function.
Okay, I see that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That, that's what that is. Okay, let's keep going. So we got, that's a ten-pointer. So just put.
There's a question on the chat and it says, I'm going back to an owl morph. Is it like through and coughs?
Say again?
Uh, there's a question on, um, the chat and it says, an owl morph, it's like through and cough, but she just said it's wrong. So she says, never mind.
Yeah, no, that's not. Yeah. Okay, let's do this one. So this is, I, I, this is what it's going to look like. It's very easy. It's, um. I'm going to give you some type of a word or affix and you're going to tell me if it's free or bound. So let me give you a couple here. If I say. M E N T, is that free or bound?
Bound?
That's right, right? It experiment. It has to attach to another word in order for it to work, right? What if I give you this one? How about book?
Free.
That's it. How about this one? If I said I N G?
Bound.
Good. If I said L Y?
Bound.
If I said truck?
Free.
Good. Okay, so this is two questions worth, there are ten points to pay, so that's twenty points for, for seven and eight. Has to do with, um, uh, free and bound. So I'll put ten points here. Put another ten points here. Okay, let's move on. Let's see what else we have. The fact that the E D ending has three different pronunciations illustrates examples of a what? A, owl phone? B, alamorph? C, phone or D, phoneme?
Alamorph?
That is it. Now, the key is you saw the E D, right? The E D is definitely an inflectional past tense ending. That's an alamorph. So because it has different pronunciations, but it still has the same grammatical function, that is an alamorph. That's exactly what that is. Okay, let's do seven and eight now. Let's see what we got here. And believe it or not, that whole mess was just a 10 point question, but it's a multiple choice. Okay, let's go to the next one.
The reason why it's an alamorph, it's because it's different pronunciation, but it's spelled the same?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's different pronunciations, but with the same spelling. It's different pronunciations, but with the same grammatical function, it's still the E D, the simple past inflectional ending. So you have to look at what the, what the definition of an alamorph is. An alamorph is a non distinctive variation of a morphine. So even, even though the E, E D has three different pronunciations, it's still the simple past inflectional affix. It hasn't changed in its function.
Okay, I see that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That, that's what that is. Okay, let's keep going. So we got, that's a 10 pointer. So just put.
There's a question on the chat and it says, um, going back to an alamorph, is it like through and cough?
Say again.
Uh, there's a question on, um, the chat and it says, an alamorph, it's like through and cough, but she just said it's wrong. So she says, nevermind.
Yeah, no, that's not, yeah. Okay, let's do this one. So this is, I, I, this is what it's going to look like. It's very easy. It's, um, I'm going to give you some type of a word or affix and you're going to tell me if it's free or bound. So let me give you a couple here. If I say, M E N T, is that free or bound?
Bound.
Bound.
That's right, right? It experiment, it has to attach to another word in order for it to work, right? What if I give you this one? How about book?
Free.
That's it. How about this one? If I said I N G?
Bound.
Good. If I said L Y?
Bound.
If I said truck?
Free.
Good. Okay, so this is two questions worth, there are 10 points apiece. So that's 20 points for, for seven and eight. Has to do with, um, uh, free and bound. So I'll put 10 points here. Put another 10 points here. Okay, let's move on and see what else we have. Okay, hold on a minute, wait a minute. I got it. Don't wish you could do this at your house. You can just put a mute and everybody's quiet. You can't do it in real life though, can you? Though you'd like to. Okay, here we go. Let's see, um, okay, the next part, here's kind of what it's going to look like, right? Uh, let me, let me, let me share my screen first. I keep forgetting what I'm doing here. So it'll say, it'll say blank is written as and just put what the word is. So take a minute and look at some of these words for a second. You have four of these. They will be, I think they're 10 points apiece. I'll check in a minute. Okay, let's look at the first words. You have the P, you have the typewriter A, the N and the, the D. What is that? My handwriting is terrible. It's hard writing on a computer. Like I write with my fingernails. It's, okay, how about the next one? You have the, the B, the capital I, L, D, little I, and then the Ima.
Building.
Good. And then the last one, boy, that's a tough one.
Is that anxiety?
Yeah. It is exactly that, yeah.
That's going to match my energy for my mood for the test, anxiety.
Yeah, there you go. There's, I mean, you guys should be lucky. I took phonetics at BYU. I had to transcribe Cuban speakers and Puerto Ricans and whole paragraphs. It was a nightmare. It was, I got a B minus in that class. I was happy and I had a tutor. It was really, really hard. Uh, okay, see, you kind of see that. So let me go back to the, I was, so I think you'll see four of these on the test, right? Let me look at it one more time. Make sure I see what he has. Yeah, you got, now one of them's a 15 pointer. So 10, 20, 30, 10, 20, 30. No, there's five, one, two, three, four, five. If I'm looking at it right. Yeah, so you got 10, 20, 30, 40. That's 55 points. 55 points deal with, uh, taking a word and writing it back into regular English. That's, that's going to be 15, uh, 55 points right there. So that's question nine, 10, 11, 12 and 13. Let me share my screen one more time here. So get those out of the way. So that brings us to nine, I P A, 10, I P A, 11, I P A, 12, I P A, eight, nine, 10, 11. There you go. Then the next set, let me double check it. See what we have here. Yeah, it'll say do not use brackets in your answer. Blank is transcribed phonetically as, you have to, you have to transcribe it. Each of these are 15 points apiece, so they're worth 60. There's four of them. So we got one, two, three, four, question 15, 16, 17 and 18. Let me share here. Did I miss something here? Wait a minute. Yeah, so you got, actually 13, I forgot to put in there too. Give me a minute. So let's see if I can give you some examples on this. Okay, let me share my screen. It'll, I'll try to keep these pretty basic. It'll be something like, um, let me share my screen here. So, so it might be met. Take a minute, transcribe that one. If I said bikes, these are all 15 points apiece. Take a minute on those. You have met, bikes, could and dogs. So there will be, there will be four of these, each one's 15 points. You have a total of 60. 60 points transcription. Notice how basic the, the symbols are here. You can, you can use just your keyboard to do it. You don't have to have any special symbols here. So you got met, bikes, could, dogs, dogs. So how did we do the first one? Met.
Is that the M I T?
No, M I T would be either met or meat. So it's met.
I, if, for the test, I would transcribe it exactly like that.
Now, then it would be made.
Is it the Epsilon?
Yeah, so you're, you're going to have to do the capital E. That's the only thing you can do there. Just do that. So it's met, met, met. Now let's take the word bikes. What do we do with this one? B I K S, bikes.
Would it be B lowercase I K S?
I would do A Y.
Yes, that's.
Oh, you're right.
So by and then what?
K S. Oh, look, Taylor, Taylor put it in the chat.
Okay, good. Yeah, bikes. So it's bikes, B I K S, bikes. And then let's take the word could, could.
K U D.
Now here's a trick. We got either the lower or the uppercase U or the capital U. What are we going to do?
Upper case.
Good. We want to do the capital U here, right? And then could, could or L or D. If you have the L or don't do the L, that's fine. Okay, how about dogs? Daw, dogs.
Is it A W G Z?
Ow, da, daug, daug.
Oh, no.
It's, um, D and then the C that's like reversed and then G and Z.
Yeah, maybe the, the open O on this one, right? So da, dog. And maybe you might do the typewriter A. I'll give you credit.
Could you do a capital A for that? Because it is a little bit different, I think, than.
We don't, there is no capital A. We don't use that.
There isn't. Oh, wait, hang on. Sorry, I'm like catching up in my head.
Yeah, no, there's no, y- y- you have either the open O or the typewriter A. Those are really your two choices. Daw, uh, dogs, 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 depending on how you want to say it. But that's 60 points. So let's clarify. So 55 points. The words already written into the I P A, write it back into English. That's 55 points. And then what you see here is another 60. So we're moving quickly. We're building points very quickly. Remember, get every point you can. Every point you can and don't miss a lot of the multiple choice points. It will kill your score overall. It's going to be hard to get an A if you miss some of the multiple choice stuff. So try to get those questions correct. Okay, let's see what we got now. Let's move on. Okay, let me go back. So we got the I P A out of the way. Okay, I'm going to give you another example of alamorph. So let's see what you can do with this one. So if I say lessons. If I said screwdrivers, hammers, hammers. Pieces. Pieces. Okay, I want you to look at, at these things for a minute. Let me put these in the chat. Lessons, hammers, pieces. Okay, let me put it here. Let me put them in here. There you go. Observe these three words. Yeah, observe these three words. Yeah, somebody said that. Yeah, in New York, New York, yeah. Dogs and coffee, yes. And they also in some areas, they have the R West dialect up there too. You can spot people from the Northeast. I saw this lady the other day. I met her. I was talking with her and I could tell she was from the Northeast. I said, are you from New York? She goes Brooklyn. And she goes, how'd you know? I said, I, I could hear some of your vowels in there. I could tell. And she'd been here for, for 35, 40 years, but she still had that Brooklyn accent. Okay, see the observed words there, right? You guys are looking at that. Okay, now let me show you what. Let me show you what the question is now. Okay, it says, pay particular attention to how the S inflectional ending is pronounced. Observe the following words. I just gave them to you. It says, what can be concluded about the S inflectional ending based on these three examples I just put in the chat? So you got, you got A, B, C and D. This is a 10 point question. A, each ending changes i- in its inflectional function to the following. Plural S, possessive S, third person singular inflection S. B, these words illustrate non distinctive realizations of the same phoneme. C, the various pronunciations of the endings do not change the inflectional function of the plural S ending. D, the inflectional ending has the same pronunciation in all three words. So what can we say there?
Uh, D?
Nope.
Would it be plural S's? There was a lot of words, so I already forgot what the options were.
Yeah, I was, I was having the same problem.
Here, okay, look, look at it. Look, look in the chat. A, B, C, D. A, each ending changes to the following. B, these words illustrate non distinctive realizations of the same phoneme. C, the various pronunciations do not change inflectional function. Or D, the inflection landing has the same pronunciation in all three words. You have the data.
It doesn't change the inflectional meaning?
It does not. Yes, because lessons is the plural S. Hammers is the plural S and pieces is the plural S. It's the plural S ending every time. What do we got here? Yeah, C, C, C and C. Good. Yeah, the various endings do not change the function of the plural S. It is an alamorph. I didn't tell you that this time, but I have three questions that focus on alamorphs. Whether I say so directly or not, this is still asking you about alamorphs. So that's a 10 point question. Okay, let's move on. See what else we have here. So that was number 18, right? Number 19. This is straight from the workbook, believe it or not. I'll put it in the chat for you. Maybe this will work better. Here. Okay, I want you to look in the chat and pay attention to those words. We have two columns. Use, close, excuse, abuse, diffuse. The second column, use, close, excuse, abuse, diffuse. So think about those things for just a minute. And then this. How does a difference in pronunciation affect the lexical category of the word? Just look in the chat. The words are changing from nouns to verbs. The words in each set are changing from adjectives to adverbs. There is no effect at all on either set of words. D, the words in each set change from one syllable to two syllable words. A, good Ashley. That's right. Because use, the first column, these can all be used as nouns. My book has a specific use to prepare me for the exam. Or I use my book to prepare me for the exam. So they're changing from nouns to verbs. Exactly. Okay, let's move ahead. See what else we have here. Now we're getting to 20. And this is exactly, i- it's exactly like this. On, on the, here's the exact instructions from the test here. So I don't want to, so you, I want you to know, I, I don't want you to get confused between when I want you to isolate morphemes and when I want you to draw trees of, of a word. So, so I'll put this in there for isolating morphemes. You're going to see that exactly. How do I know that? I just took this from the test. That's how I know. The following word contains several morphemes. Divide the word into its component morphemes using the plus symbol. State which morpheme is, is the root for each affix. State whether it is inflectional or derivational. If it's derivational, note how it changes the part of speech or meaning of the word. If it's inflectional, note the grammatical information it adds to the word, right? Now, now you guys see that, right? So now let me give you a word here. I'm going to get, give you something similar to the test. So you can practice this a little bit. Maybe the chat works here. We could do the chat sometimes, right? There we go. Okay, let's do this. Can somebody in the chat? I want you to, I want you to do step one only. Break it into its component morphemes using the plus symbol. Let's see what that looks like first. Exactly. Nice. Okay, number two. Identify the root of the word. Just put root equals and then put the root. Good. Now, somebody tell me what re is. Is it derivational or inflectional and justify your response? Re is derivational. Good, to do again. Exactly. Nice. Now somebody do I N G. Is it derivational or inflectional and why? And Taylor, don't forget, I want to give you all the points, right? So re is derivational because it changes the meaning of the word to again. Exactly. It looks like we know what we're doing. Changes the word from a verb into a gerund. Now, don't get that technical. No, I like Nicole's answer. I like Beatrice's answer. It's the inflectional continuous and. It's the inflectional continuous ending or it's the inflectional progressive ending. To me, those are good. It might be a gerund, Taylor, maybe, but we don't have the full context on that. But if you said rewriting is important when you're doing essays, okay, that, that would be you being used as a gerund there. Definitely would, but we don't really know. But if you just say progressive or continuous, you're, you're fine on that. Okay, let's do one more. So these will be, if I look back at the test one more time, we have a forty-point question. We have another forty-point question and we have a ten-point question. So we have ninety points. Three questions with isolating morphemes. Okay, let me give you another one. I'm gonna go back to the chat, right? Sometimes when I'm teaching, I, I can't do the chat all the time. I apologize if I haven't answered all your messages. But, but how about this? If I said what are you gonna do if I give you a ten-point question and ask you to isolate that morpheme? What the heck are you gonna do?
We're gonna leave it.
And so you can't really do step one. Go to step two. The root equals what? Just do that.
Play.
Right? So root equals you're done, right? Don't overthink that one. There's one on there. It's, it's just simply a free morpheme. You can't break it down to any other smaller units. It, it is what it is. Some of you are gonna try to transcribe it and you're gonna do all these weird things to it. Just say root equals play. That's it. That's all you gotta do on that one. Don't let this one discourage you. It's very simple. It is a, you look at, you look at the logic of it. One of them is worth forty points. This one is worth only ten. It is telling you that there's not much you can do with it. Or the, the more that you do with a word, the more you break it into parts and you label the parts, the more points you're gonna get. So think it, think about, remember, I'm from Mississippi. I'm very simple. I don't, I don't make things overly complicated. It is as simple as it looks in many cases. Okay, let's move ahead. So we got that done. Let me see if I can give you one more that. Um, okay, here's one more I want to give you. Okay, let me go back into the chat. Yeah, this is very similar. Not exactly the word, but it has the E D and the L Y. Okay, how about this? Somebody break this into its smaller parts using the plus symbol. Let's do that first. Beatrice, you're missing something. Oops.
I read it as her, I, as hurried instead of hurriedly.
There. Nicole Alexandria, perfect. So hurry, E D, L Y. The root equals, somebody do that. Hurry. The E D equals inflection or derivation or M Y. Somebody do, somebody do the E D, somebody do the L Y. Let's see how that works. Good. E D's inflectional, but you're not giving me, I'm gonna take points off. Gotta give me the whole picture. It's inflectional what? I need the whole thing.
I'm thinking.
Good. Inflectional past participle is fine. Inflectional simple past is fine. Either way, I'm okay. Go to L Y. What is that? Somebody do that one.
I know some of us like send one with part of the answer and then like quickly try to type the rest of it. So.
Yeah, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Okay, let's look at Taylor's response. Taylor's in the zone. T R B, what do we got? L Y is derivational, yes. So you got a half of it because it changes a verb hurry into an adverb. This is exactly, boy, you get a lot of points on that. Yeah, that's really descriptive, the way you said that. And that's it. That's called isolating morphemes. Okay, let's move ahead. So now let's go to the next part. Just about done. So we're getting now into, uh, we're getting into twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So these are, it looks like thirty, thirty and thirty, so ninety. If I'm looking at it right, let me make sure. Okay, so it'll say draw tree, draw diagram for the word blank after, after the example. Now, I have no idea if this is gonna work. Let me put this in, in the chat. It may not even work right, but let me try it. So you can kinda see what it looks like. Wow, maybe it did work. Uh-oh, shouldn't have put that word in there. Don't, don't, uh, forget this word. Draw diagram blank after the example reconstruction. So I, I will actually give you, I will show you how I want you to do it. You guys see that? I, I will show you exactly what I'm trying to get you to do here. Okay, so let me, let me put one here. Let, let's try three of them here for a minute. Let's get this out of here. Okay, let's say okay, how about this one? We'll say manufacturing. I want you to do a, uh, do a tree of that one. How about this would be like a thirty point, even though it's only two parts, it's still gonna be worth thirty. It'll be a thirty point. They're all thirty. Hope you guys get a lot of points on some of the easy ones here. If I said retransplantation. Let me look at one more in there. See what else we have. Okay, I got one more I wanna do here. This will help you kinda similar. Okay, so let's look at the first one. Somebody walk me through this one. So we have manufacturing breaks into two words. What are they? Or two parts?
Manufacture plus I N D.
Good. And then let's start with manufacture. What is that?
It's a verb.
Good. Then we have manufacturing. It isn't as bad as it looks. This is what you have to do, right? Don't have a heart attack. It, it takes a little bit of time. So what, what is manufacturing?
Also a verb.
So it hasn't really changed at all. So manufacture verb there. So we did that one. That's thirty points. Okay, how about retransplantation?
Re plus transplant plus I O N.
Good. Okay, let's start with transplant. What is that?
A noun.
You could, you could argue a noun or a verb. Okay, and then what if you say retransplant?
It's a verb.
Good. So let's do that. Where it gets a little frustrating. Then we wanna look at this one. So we have transplantation. So what is retransplantation?
A verb?
Taylor said a noun.
Yes. She knows what's going on. Listen to her. Yeah, so that, it, so it's going from a noun to a verb to a noun here. Then let's do one more. Remember how we're, we're trying to show through the, the, uh, the lines what, how the word's changing derivationally from one part of speech to the next. That's what we're showing. Okay, modernism. You have one that ends in I S M, right? So what do we do with this?
Break it up for modernism.
Good. So let's look at modern. We have modern facilities. We got a bowling alley in that new building they're, they're building. I'm not kidding you. I saw it the other day when I was running in the morning. There's a bowling alley in there. At, at Cal State. I'm not joking with you. It's like a ten-lane bowling alley. All kinds of lights and everything with screens to keep track of your score, all of it. At Cal State San Bernardino. I'm not joking. Okay, so if I say modern facilities, what is modern? What part of speech is that? We'll start with that. In modern, yeah, modern times, right? You have to think it, it occurs before noun. Then we have modernism. So let's do this one. So what is modernism? What, what lexical category is that?
Is it a noun?
Good. That's it. So you have ninety points right there and we're just about done. And let me look at what else we have here. Let me see. So this is good. That's good. Okay, how about this? We got twenty-five people here still. Okay, let's do this. Put this in the chat. Yeah, there we go. Let's see what we have. Oh, you, you can do trees in the chat. No joke. You did it. Yeah, except Taylor, modernism is a noun, not an adjective. But no, I can see what you're doing there in the chat. Okay, wow. I did not know you could do that in the chat like that. Okay, here's this one.
It is hard to do and sometimes it shifts it after you send it.
And, and guess what? It'll do it in Canvas too, but I can read what you, even though it shifted it. When I look at it, you're, what I'm seeing here is, uh, modern is an adjective, modernism is an adjective. So out of thirty points, you get fifteen. Because modernism is a, is a noun, not an adjective. So you would get half of the points for that one. Okay, let's look at this. Pay attention to the I S T affix in English. Biology biologist, sociology sociologist. We got it. Nicole's in the zone. Physics physicist. So Nicole, so then you're saying that it's changed from a noun thing to a noun person. So based on your reasoning, does it make is this affix a derivational or inflectional affix? That's my next question. That's it. Taylor and Nicole just nailed it. So, and I think if I'm looking at it, I, I think we just did it. Let me double check the, I think that covers everything that you need to know. I mean exactly what you need to know. You can't get any more precise than this. Okay, so then twenty-seven. Anybody can get this one. I, we got one more. It's more just analysis, looking more derivational or inflectional. Yeah, you're welcome, Ashley. Uh, let's see, let's look at this. Right there. So what can we say about the E D here? Alex walked to school. The professor handed out the assignments. My friend planted a garden in hopes of, of what can we say, say here? Can we say that the E D, is it inflectional or derivational? And what information is it adding to the word?
Is this where we would talk about the voice, um, and then voiceless?
I'm not asking that. No, here's what I'm saying. Here's a question. It's this. Let me put it in the chat for you. That. Is the E D a derivational or inflectional affix? If it's derivational, note how it changes a part of speech or meaning of the word. If it's inflectional, somebody already answered. Taylor answered it. Yeah. It's inflectional because it's making the word pass. It's past tense. That's it. That's what you wanna say. The E D is the inflectional past tense ending. That's what it is. And that's it. That's what it looks like. So it's a combination of free response, multiple choice and doing a few tree diagrams, isolating some morphemes. But there's a lot of points in morphology. It's heavier, probably over half. Over half of all the points are connected to morphology in some way. And that's it. So test is open all the way until Saturday night, I think. And then I think on Thursday, we're getting into syntax. If you don't want a whole bunch of new information, take the test before Thursday or just don't come to class on Thursday. But I'm getting into syntax on that day. We're gonna move into that and eventually we, we will get into tree diagrams. That'll be our ultimate goal with syntax. All right, any other questions before we end the class today?
No, thank you, Professor.
All right, good luck. Remember, some parts of the test will help you with other parts of the test. So if you can't give examples of derivational inflectional morphemes, if you're drawing a blank on that one twenty-five point question, look at other parts of the test and get ideas and go back to that question. So don't panic if you feel like you don't know everything. Go through, complete as much of the test as you can and then go back to the ones you're not sure about. But remember, don't forget to put something in the blank. Don't leave anything blank. That's a very, because I can't give you anything. If you put nothing in there, you get, you get nothing. You put something in there, you'll get some points. All right, I guess that's it. All right, take care, everybody. See you guys on Thursday.
Professor, could we still have, um, scratch paper next to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Just tell me what you're doing. Say, I have, I have some blank papers. Show it to me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna write down some things as I'm doing the problems. You can talk me through what you're doing, no problem.
Yeah, I was talking to.